All right. It's seven o'clock. You guys are settled? Okay. Well, it's seven o'clock. I like to start things on time. So, welcome to... Am I on? I'm not on. There you go. All right. There we go. Welcome to Harrisville City Council meeting. Tonight is January 10, and it's a very rainy night. So, I'm not sure if that's the reason why our internet is a little bit unstable, but just be aware of that. Those of you on Zoom, we are doing the best we can with that. So, thank you all for being here. I'm not sure where Councilman Christiansen is, so I'm going to turn the time over to Councilmember Loveland to give the pledge of allegiance.
Y'all, please rise and say the pledge of allegiance with us.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father and Son, we are so grateful this night to meet together here as the city of Harrisville. We're thankful for the opportunity to live in this great city and to do the things that allow us to live here. We're thankful this night that we can meet as the city council and mayor and city officers. Bless us this night that we will do those things that are best for our citizens and that will help our city to grow in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate you stepping in. All right. Moving on to item number three, which is our consent items. This is an approval of the meeting minutes for December 13, 2022, as presented. Oh, they did come out in the first email that came out, but they are on there. Have you had a chance to read them? Or would you like to table those for another time? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 13, 2022.
Recording in progress.
I'll second.
Will you say it again?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
I should be sarcastic.
Thank you. Item number four is no longer necessary, and neither is item five. So, we're going to go past that. So, that leaves us at our business items, item number six. So, we'll go right into the first one, which is a discussion possible action to approve Ben Loewenview's Phase A, which is the final subdivision. Jenny, City Administrator.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Councilwoman. Thank you. We do have included in your packet a staff report that gives the history. You're all familiar with the Ben Loewen development. We do have the developer here present, and we'll just quickly review some of the items on the memos, and then we will give you some additional information on that. The history here is a master development agreement was adopted in June of 2021. And through the development process, we now are at the stage of a final approval on Phase 2A. Planning Commission did give their recommendation for final approval in July of 2022. Since then, these just points... I'm just going to go over a few points that are important to this discussion. The development team, along with staff, met with UDOT in the latter part of July for the access permit application for the access connecting to Highway 89. They required additional studies of the intersection at 1550 North, Highway 89, which is the Hunting Creek Access. The development team prepared an additional traffic study and are continuing to work through the UDOT comments. And there is additional comment included in this staff report. But they did... One of the preliminary memo items was a grant of easement for the stormwater drainage down on the west side of the highway through the property to the city-owned property on 750 North, and they have received that grant of easement. The analysis of the proposed plat 2A in comparison to the master development agreement is here before you. They have a proposed 101 single-family lots. The actual NDA included 103 single-family lots. The proposed 52 townhomes are consistent with what is in the plat. The landscaping plans in relationship to what was recorded in the master development agreement are also mostly similar. There's a small change to Park E with the water feature, but the same amount of open spaces maintained, and they are including a water feature. It will just not be an interactive water feature there. The comments that are applicable to this approval... When application was made to UDOT for the access permit, the feedback stated that an amendment was going to be required to the Harrisville City 2006 corridor agreement with the access points on Highway 89. This amendment is actually a more comprehensive process than just relocating that traffic signal from 1550 to the proposed 1900 North. It includes all access points to all state roads within Harrisville's boundaries. So, we as staff didn't feel the need to necessarily hold up this development. We are still recommending a final approval based on and subject to their permit being granted through UDOT. We admit as staff we were hyper-focused on the UDOT permit. And when we did a full review of the project, there were a couple of other outstanding items. Nothing that staff felt was terribly concerning, but we just wanted to note them on the engineer's memo. They're outlined here in Matt Robertson's memo, including the county surveyor's office sign-off on it, Bonavista Water's sign-off, the normal requirements that we have with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, and also the type of plans that they're required to use for construction. An engineer's estimate will be required for the public improvements. All of those items are common items to be addressed. But staff is still recommending final approval through this subject to the engineer's memo, which I believe has a date today, January 10, and also the staff memo dated January 4. The plat is also included in the packet, so you can review that as well. And if you have any questions, we're happy to address them. I have Justin here as well for any public works questions you might have on the project.
Is that it? All right. Thank you. Unless you have questions? Councilwoman, any questions?
How's the irrigation setup looking?
That is to be clearly discussed. They are working on the drawings of revamping that entire ditch because there are those existing ponds that we want to get rid of, those old head gates on. But there is a section that does need a new head gate. So, I spoke with the developer, and we'll speak with the current ditch users and hopefully come to an agreement on getting that head gate replaced.
Any other questions?
So, this is not... Is this final approval for the whole thing or just for the... Just let me... Can you show me the picture of the piece? It's what's out by dinnerette? Right there.
And the second. Next one, ready?
Yes. So, this is the single-family home highlighted area. And then the next proposed 52 townhomes are also included in this phase. It also includes the main roadway that connects from Highway 89 to 2000 North as part of this phase, including the parks that were outlined as well. But it is the largest phase of the project.
It's pretty exciting.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Okay. If no other questions, I need a motion, please.
Are you okay with it?
Yeah. Now, the only other question I had and really asking about it in this was we talked about the ditch being unfenced, and that came up in several council meetings called. So, I don't think it's something to discuss because it's not part of this phase. But it's still a concern of a lot of residents where it's an open ditch now, especially with all the water going into our Millennial Park now.
Once that ditch is actually completely reconstructed, there will be no need for that water to go in the Millennial Park. Right now, because of the piping that is behind those homes that has been filled with roots and not properly big enough, they're going to address that issue by moving the whole ditch onto their property, and we'll eliminate that pipe. And then we won't have to pay for extra overflow for Millennial Park from Six Mile Creek.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions before we go for make a motion? All right. Let's try this again.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ben Loewenview's Phase 2 final subdivision. Is that 2A or is it just 2? I'm 2A. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Could be subject to those memos. I'm sorry. Did you say that?
I'm sorry. Yes. Subject to the memos.
The second's good with that?
Yep.
And everyone's still okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, discussion possible action to approve Ben Loewenview's Phase 2D preliminary subdivision. Jenny?
So, this subdivision goes right along the hand. This is actually preliminary approval. And this phase is the northeast corner of the project. We can see if we can get you a picture of that. Bear with us with our technical difficulties tonight.
Do we have this the whole Zoom meeting? I'm wondering.
It is very unstable site. Okay. So...
Recording in progress.
So, you'll see by the plat... Might have to zoom out a little bit on that so you can see the plat. You'll see from... That this phase includes the... I'm sorry. I believe I gave you the wrong reference. It's going to be page 18. So, page 18 is an overview of the Phase 2D. You'll see the engineer's comments that are related here on this phase. It includes the twin homes and single-family homes of the 2D portion. Matt's memo is actually page 15, outlines the preliminary plat approval items for this. It is... It includes similar requirements as the 2A phase. It has a proposed 122 residential units, including both single-family and multifamily units. They are consistent... It is consistent with the master development agreement. The plan will need to be reviewed once again by the Weaver County Surveyor's Office. He has some notes about the site plan and roadway, culinary water requirements, secondary water requirements, sanitary sewer, storm drain, and then general requirements. And this phase was contingent on approval of Phase 2A. And this comes to you from a positive recommendation from Planning Commission, I believe from their November 2022 meeting. Off the top of my head on that one. I'm sorry.
Right. Any questions?
Do you have questions?
So, if this is preliminary, it will go back to Planning Commission, be reviewed again, and then come back to you.
And all the little red marks will get taken care of?
Staff does recommend that any approvals motions include contingent on subject to engineer's memo. This one's dated January 9.
Just out of curiosity, what is this other portion that's kind of to the west of where this is? You know, what part of that is that? Now, is that part of the 2 that we just approved?
The grayed-out portion to the west would be 2A. The roadway that connects up to 2000 North is part of 2A that you just said by memo. Yes.
Yeah. I can almost see it. There it is.
Any other questions? Good. Okay. I think I'm ready for a motion, please.
Our motion that we approve the Ben Loewenview's Phase 2D preliminary subdivision subject to the engineer's notes as of January 9.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries again. All right. Moving on to item C. This is a discussion possible action to approve the Harrisville Fields preliminary subdivision. Jenny, again?
Thank you. Included in your packet on this proposed subdivision is a staff memo from January 5. I want to give a little bit more background on this subdivision since this is preliminary approval. The applicant is requesting preliminary approval of the proposed Harrisville Fields Cluster subdivision, which is a 54-lock cluster development located at approximately 750 North, 250 West. Back in November of 2021, a proposal was received for a cluster development on property located at approximately 863 North Harrisville Road. At the December 9, 2021 Project Management Meeting, the committee actually denied the application because the length of the proposed cul-de-sac exceeded the city's standard of 600 feet, and the maximum of eight lots allowed on a cul-de-sac in the A1 zone exceeded that number. So, on December 15 of 2021, an application for a variance was received, and a variance hearing was held on January 18 of 2022. The decision of the hearing officer was to grant the variance to allow the construction of about 20 homes on the cul-de-sac and to allow cul-de-sac exceeding 600 feet in length. And pardon me, but I didn't include that was due to the floodplain that heavily affected this parcel. So, he granted that variance. In the months following, there was continuing discussion to extend the subdivision beyond the initial parcels down to a southern connection to 400 North and Ogden. On July 8 of 2022, application was made for preliminary approval of Harrisville Fields Cluster subdivision, expanding the initial project, which was originally 24... About approximately 24 acres to 30... Almost 37 acres. The Planning Commission recommended preliminary approval during their November 9 meeting. But after that point, Harrisville staff has met with Ogden City to discuss that south connection on North Street. They were required to receive an agreement with Ogden for that connecting piece. And at the time, we thought the sewer was also going to be connected to the Ogden City Sewer. During that meeting, it was discovered that the sewer is actually Central Weaver Sewer. So, they will need a will-serv letter from Central Weaver Sewer, not Ogden. But the road connection is still in place. And during that discussion, we discovered that the long-range Wasatch Front Regional Council Plan is for 400 North to connect through across the railroad tracks and connect to 400 North in the BDO. So, due to that discussion, we felt in conjunction with Ogden City that it was imperative for that alignment coming down through this subdivision to line up with Century Drive that exists in Ogden City. So, after the preliminary approval was given by Planning Commission, that change was made, and the plat included in this memo with this project is actually the new alignment of Century Drive with the subdivision. And now I'm questioning whether I sent that to you. So, I'm going to pull it... Pull it up really quickly so you can get an idea what we're talking about here. So, I'd like to draw your attention to the south end, the south piece of here. The original... The original plan showed the connection being more on the east side. But with the requirement to have North Street continue to the west, they have redrawn... The engineers worked it to go directly down south to the Century Drive. And also, we asked the developer to include the right-of-way to the west as part of this project. So, the road would be completed to this west boundary of this project. Do you have any questions on that?
Wasn't there initially some issues with the Army Corps Engineer in that area?
Not in the south area where we're talking about the connection. But yes, on the project, there are... This entire space here is floodplain.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
And they are dedicating to meet the code... And if we want to jump back to the memo, to meet the cluster development requirements, to get the bonus density, they were required to leave the part of the project as open space. So, we allowed them a combination of preserving open space and a performance bonus for building energy-efficient homes to get the 50% bonus density for their project. So, it's consistent with the A1 zone, but we're allowing additional lots for the cluster development. So, the total number of lots will be 54. They're allowed 37, and they're given a 50% bonus density for that.
And how big are they?
They'll meet the R110 regulations of 10,000 square feet per lot, and they will be required to have 90-foot frontage on that. So, those are conditions in this, along with their will-serv letters. And they will need approval from Ogden City for the road connection to 400 North. So, what we basically did is we revisited it and decided to protect the right-of-way to the west. We are also, as part of the general plan amendment... This is a little bit more information than you maybe need at this time, but it's helpful for this decision. We're addressing some of the transportation map as part of the general plan amendment that's going to Planning Commission tomorrow night. And we are identifying this area as being something in our long-term transportation plan that needs to be protected for that connection. It's better to protect when there's nothing built prior to any building taking place than having to go through and...
And where are the entrance and exits?
For this proposed project?
This one?
The entrance will be... Are you familiar with the Stevenson property on North Harrisville Road? So, it'll be this... This is the connection to North Harrisville Road. The cul-de-sac will go to the west. It'll continue south. It'll stub to the east here, and it will come down and connect to 400 North. There's also a stub to the west as well.
Did you say they still have to give permission from Ogden City to tie in?
To the road.
If that's not given, then what happens?
And they wouldn't be able to move forward with their project.
With any of it?
Right.
Okay.
Or they'd have to modify it so that it doesn't need connection. The number of homes requires two access points to meet fire code. And so, they would have to redesign it and have less than 30 lots for the fire...
30 lots with one access.
Okay. And how many lots are there now? 50?
There's 54.
Okay. So, is that the Maxfield property on the northwest of the project?
I can't answer that in the affirmative if it is Maxfield's or if those lots fronting North Harrisville Road are... No. Oh. Wrong keyboard. My apologies.
I know the one next to it, the front part of Bell's and then the two on the side. I can't remember the guy, Johnson... Murray Johnson on the other side. And so, then Bell and... I can't... The other people. I can't remember their names. They all look down.
Recording in progress.
I've got Rasmussen...
Rasmussen, right.
And Anderson.
Okay.
David and Vivian. That's what's written on this plot here.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm just looking at my packets.
I was trying to remember the names of the families. I know them, but I... We'll go back to the...
Yeah. Can you orient yourself now?
Yep.
So, that's... Those are the two connecting pieces. These are the lots. This is the floodplain This is the floodplain that will be donated to the city. And again, this is different than what was approved at the Planning Commission level. We'll go back for final approval and we'll overview all of the, not only memo items from preliminary approval, but also this new road connection in the south end.
This might be too soon, but will those homes be allowed to have basements? In that close to the floodplain, I mean, that's a lot down there.
There's going to be slap, right?
Slap on or anything. There gotta be.
Yep.
Thank you. There's a surge spring all the way along.
Any more questions?
There is an engineer's memo with this as well dated January 5th for preliminary approval. And a staff memo dated January 5th.
And the developer's here too, if you need questions with him.
Recording in progress.
I'm sure we know that recording. Let me turn it off. Any other questions or discussion? All right, let's move on and, or move forward and have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Harrisville Fields preliminary subdivision in conjunction with all memos and...
Second.
Notes.
All right. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item D, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville Resolution 2023-01, interlocal agreement with Weber Metro for crash services. Uh, Jenny doing this?
I'm actually going to pass this one on to Chief Wilson.
All right.
So what this is, is a, um, you guys are where the homicide task force is, right? Where all agencies have a guy on and they all help investigate homes. This is the same thing as crashes. So they put a unit together with people that are trained to investigate crashes so we don't have to depend on Highway Patrol any longer. There's no additional cost to this other than the update to the comput, the crash computer that reads the cars' information each year, other than that, the, the actual unit's been paid for already. But those costs will be spread out through all of Weber County's agency. So, um, we are looking to put one person on, so the real only cost would be the hours that are in play would go. But we'd benefit from it more than we would...
How often does this service be used?
Just on major crashes, and it just depends, uh, who gets cra, I mean, yeah, it's hard to say.
Yeah, I agree, that's right.
Who gets cracked?
Yes.
So what, what cities are we with? What cities are we in?
Well, Wayne will be involved, correct? Um, Riverdale, Ogden, Weber County. I don't know if North Ogden Pleasant, yours, or Siamon or not, but...
Yeah, they're listed here.
I think they have the option to, so...
Yeah, yeah, everybody has that option.
Whether they're going to or not, just...
A no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a, it's a low-cost effective way of investigating major crashes.
So is it basically just applied to us when it's in our city limits? Or does this person go and assist?
Yeah, so the way it works is if Weber County has a crash and our guy's available, the, our guy would go assist, yes. So it'd be, it would be a group of them, not just one person.
Yeah.
You'll probably have four or five crash investigators on the scene.
All right. Any more questions for Chief Wilson? All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion that, uh, that we adopt Resolution, uh, Resolution 23-01 on the interlocal agreement with Weber Metro for crash services.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. I need a roll call on this one, please. Councilmember Lovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you very much.
Quick, quick, is that an acronym for ash?
Um, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
No, I keep looking for something.
Literally what it is. All right. Item E, a discussion possible action to authorize allocation of approximately $32,000 of capital funds to replace the playground equipment at Harrisville Main Park by matching Weber County rent grant funds. Jenny, next.
Thank you, Mayor. So included in your packet is a memo from January 4th. And staff has prepared a ramp, a regular ramp grant application for the 2023 cycle. And as part of that requirement, we are requesting matching funds of up to $32,000 to match the Weber County. We have received a private donation, and we were also prepared to submit our application contingent on the approval of these funds being allocated for the replacement. The history there is in the fall of 2019, the department removed deteriorating playground equipment that became a hazard to children because the exterior paint was cracking and creating sharp edges, if you remember that. We removed that equipment, we have been without, and there has been a lot of requests from the public for us to replace that playground equipment. So we have prepared that ramp grant, we have had it pre, previewed, I guess is the best way to say it, by the ramp secretary by the county, indicating that we have everything lined up for approval. And so we're asking for that capital funds to be allocated so that we can submit it. That money will only be sent, spent if we are awarded that proj, that grant money. If we're not, then we'll come back to you with a different proposal if we do not receive those funds.
Whether we know if we get the funds or not, is that, is there a date?
I believe in April, they will let us know if we receive the funding.
Okay.
And we're able to go ahead, we've got the bids that are required, and we would be able to move forward with that fairly quickly. It wouldn't wait till next fiscal year is my understanding.
Thank you.
The city has to come up with a matching grant. Or I guess a matching portion.
Yeah. So ramp, ramp, if they approve it, it will be for up to $32,000, and we match the $32,000.
So the total project included in your packet is also our budget that we're required to submit.
Okay.
So this is the overview of, so we're asking for a total of $42,452 from grant monies. We received a private donation. We are also donating our hours of labor, and we're asking, this is the proposed amount from capital funds, if, we're asking up to $32,000 in case that number changes a little bit.
Having been a few of those rent discussion meetings, the more you can, you know, you have to have so much money to put in there, the more you can show that you've got labor to donate, or that this project will be a success for the community, then it raises your score, and the scores are evaluated, and that's how you determine whether you're going to get the funding or not. So the more we can do to say that we'll have the labor, and this is worth that much, so it's, we're donating that much time to it, and the matching funds, we're more likely to get the, the matching funds and the relief.
Okay, thank you.
And this is playground equipment for like 12 and under? Is that what we decided?
Early childhood playground equipment, yes.
Because the ones we have left now is just for 12 and over, so it's difficult for me to scroll over there. Okay, any more discussion? If not, can I have a motion, please?
By motion that we authorize the allocation of approximately $32,000 of capital funds to replace the playground equipment at Harrisville Main Park by matching Weber County grant grant funds.
I'll say mine.
I have a motion and a second. Don't I even need to roll call on this? All right. Councilmember Lovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Willholtson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you. We'll let you know when that, uh, has been awarded, when we're in the other, right? All right. Uh, that's the end of our business items, moving on to item number seven, which is public comments. This is a chance for everyone in the public to come forward to the podium. Uh, you have three minutes, be mindful of your three minutes, and you can express anything you need. Please tell us your name, and now the time is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Schofield. Uh, I live at 1174 North, 125 East, and I just wanted to make the Harrisville City aware of a situation with a detention pond to the east of my home. Uh, it is currently full to capacity. And this morning was flooding into 1150 North through the overflow, which is what is, it is designed to do. I'd like to just express some concerns about that, and if Harrisville City is capable, maybe they could drain it just a little bit more to bring that, uh, that water level down. As we speak, it is still full to capacity, and that's my concern. Now, obviously, if we have flood mitigation efforts underway that prevents us from releasing that water downstream, I support that, that's just fine. But I just wanted to make Harrisville City aware of the situation. And then also, I'd like to suggest that I have to call the city this morning to have a Public Works employee come out and take a look at the gates and actually lower the water level a little bit so it wouldn't be in the overflow state. And I appreciate that employee coming out and doing that for us. And, uh, just offer a suggestion to the city that they can, um, take a more proactive approach to checking these detention ponds so that they don't wait until they're overflowing and, uh, a member of the, of the city has to call in to explain the situation. Thank you.
Anyone else on the items?
Hi, I'm Michelle Walters, and I live to the west of the Harrisville Fields subdivision that's in the plans to be put in. And I don't even know if this is the right time to ask these questions, because this is a first for me, but I'll present them to you, and you can let me know. Dixon Creek runs in the back of our property, and my question was when Harrisville Fields goes in, will that still flow the way it's currently flowing, or will that be changed?
Okay, so this is not a discussion, this is just the time for you to ask your questions?
Yes, yeah. Okay, so you don't, you don't...
Not at this moment, you can ask your questions.
Okay, okay. And then another question I had was if that road gets completed going down North Street up to where our property is, and you get it finished off, because North Street's supposed to go all the way through, currently, we maintain that, keeping the snow off of it and things like that, will that be something that will be the city's responsibility at that point? And do we know, um, typically with subdivisions, do they put fencing around those, the subdivisions, the, you know, the perimeter of the subdivisions? And that's my question.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. I'm going to close the public comments right now. We're going to move on to item eight, which is an ER council follow-up, and I'm going to have, uh, staff address some things for us, okay? Jenny, would you still like, you typed the first one for Ms. Walters?
Sure. So I'm going to defer to Justin on the water and Dixon Creek response.
There we go. So the Dixon Creek base, the, uh, channel will still, um, be in, in effect. They will pipe it under the railway sections, um, and, and actually maintain it through the subdivision. What is going to happen is part of that open space that they're donating to the city will then become a regional detention basin. Because Dixon Creek and 4 Mile meet up really close right there, it will give us more opportunity to, to hold that water back and release it at a slower rate, uh, just as we've been doing all day today. Um, and those basins are designed to have an overflow, um, to protect from washing out people's houses, yes, sometimes they don't look perfect. And in a perfect scenario, they will flood out some backyards, um, but we do try to mitigate that as quickly as possible. And we can only really release the amount of water out of those basins at a rate that's not going to inundate the rest of the city. As we all know, there's about three streams, three major streams through the city with only two crossings to get out of the city. And with those two crossings being very undersized at the railroad tracks, it really inundates, certain areas such as, as this Harrisville Fields property, um, and this lady's property herself. So we are doing the best we can, um, and being responsive, but also being reactive if we did, were a few minutes late to something. But then again, we can't tell, we, we can only be told by the weatherman what, what weather's coming in, and if it exceeds that in, in the time frame, if we get two inches of rain in, in three hours, as it did last night and early this morning, it just inundates our system. And we try to do our best and mitigate everything we can with the crew that we have.
Thank you. So as far as the question regarding the road maintenance, anything that becomes dedicated to the city as a roadway, the city will maintain. So if we maintain to the edge of the development, if, if that section is dedicated to the city, we will maintain that. Uh, the question for the fencing requirement, the zoning often dictates whether fencing requirements are part of a development. The zoning is not changing on this development, so it would be up to the private property owners, whether they put in fencing or however that looks with the development, once the development is complete and those properties are sold. But there wouldn't be a city requirement necessarily, because it's the same zone between properties.
Thank you. Justin, Director Schitzel, do you want to just go ahead and elaborate just a little bit more about what you've done today?
Yeah, so, um, due to the recent storms and, and, uh, neighboring cities, which we work very well with, um, I spoke with the director from North Ogden today, and up till yesterday, they had, at 3100 North, they had about two feet of snow. If you drive up today, there's no snow. So inevitably, what happened is North Ogden snowmelt in, plus the rain, all washed down into our city, um, and inundating our three major storm, or four major storm drain basins, which would be Rice Creek, Millennial Park, the City Park, and Dixon Creek, um, are the mains of the storm drain basins. So practically this morning, we were getting those adjusted properly so that enough would flow out, but still holding enough back that we did not, um, inundate the outfalls of the city, which would be down behind the cabinet, Chug Lane, another one, and the other one is on 6 Mile out on, behind 750 West. I was not able to, because of the field that is down on 650 West, I was not able to get down to those cul de sacs and get those addressed and cleaned. I was able to get the mini X back to Chug Lane and down through that crossing and clean that out with knowing this summer, we're going to have a, a big project of resizing that pipe, um, through our city portion, and trying to work with UTA as they do their corridor preservation, and Union Pacific to upsize those cul de sacs under the railroad tracks, because it's just the choke ports. It, it really is. And if, if I would have just go turn everything loose, the whole bottom half of our city would just be three feet underwater. Right now, as it is, a lot of those fields have about four to six inches of water in them. Again, a lot of them are fields and in floodplains, so we haven't had too much issue. There has been a few homes flooding, there's some land draining issues that we're dealing with. We've tried to get about three different companies out to help us, uh, get some land draining lines cleaned, but, um, due to, I neglect, is the best word to say, um, some roots have, have really caused some major issues, and so we're trying to get those taken out, and, and then a company that comes in and sprays a chemical that will longevity kill those out. Again, it's been a long day, as the gentleman said, that it started early this morning, it's still raining now, the basins are still full. We are, I do have guys out monitoring the situation right now. I have three different pumps out pumping in different areas. And again, we're very, we're very aware of what's transpiring in our city right now. We haven't seen these kind of storms in about five years. Definitely haven't seen these kind of rainstorms in the middle of January for a long time. Mind you, this would all be snow, we'd, we'd be all complaining about pushing the roads, but, uh, what's, what's just rain, it's coming down, so...
And you've also got some sandbags available?
Sandbags available at the, at the park for free to all residents. Yeah, there's, there should be some that's all ready to go. If not, there's sand in the trailer with bags right there and shovels readily, readily available, um, to help mitigate in whatever way we can.
Thank you. I know you guys have been out a long time, so appreciate that. Chief Wilson?
We were supposed to do it all from office, but that's my fault, I didn't see it on there, so we'll do it next. But, uh, we finally have hired our new employee that we were given last July, so it's taken us six months to find someone, so we're glad to have him on board, he started this week. And other than that, we've just been working on the budget.
What's his name?
Clint Carter.
Is he gonna have to FPO very long, or is he, what's the FPO period?
We're still gonna do a, a full, maybe not a full FPO for a brand-new person, but he previously worked for about a year in North Ogden, left to went, and went up to Alaska for a little bit, and is now wanting to come back. I think he said it was costing close to $1,500 a month to, to and from work. He was flying, he's living here, and then he would fly up, do his, his couple weeks, come back, and then go back and forth, so...
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it for me today.
Jenny?
Yes, so I'd just like to clarify with the zoning requirement with fencing, I just wanted to double-check that, and it, our code actually does say with agricultural zone, that if any existing agricultural fence is, it creates an opening in the existing, then a new fence would be required. So just be aware, if there's an existing fence there...
So the board pays you, it opens it, and then I'll put any one up?
If they create an issue, yes. I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, there's an issue.
Yeah, it triggered the agricultural requirements there. My, as far as staff follow-up, we would just like to, or I would like to draw your attention to the moderate income housing report that's included in the planning commission packet for tomorrow night. That will be coming to you in February. We have, ran, I met with the Department of Workforce Services in December and had a pre-screening of that, and it does comply with the new requirements, so we were glad to hear that. We've included, the state law requires three strategies, we opted to include six with the option for you, we qualify for special funding if we adopt five. So we've given a little wiggle room there for you to make some decisions on what strategies come. And we'll talk more about that at the retreat that we are going to remind you of in two weeks at the cabin, we'll be holding our budget and economic and community development retreat. And would everybody be okay if we moved that to 5:30 PM instead of 6:00 PM on the 24th? It's planned to be there quite a while that evening, we do, we have some interactive activities, also, that leads into my next...
Interactive?
Yeah, we have some interactive activities and things, if you have goals that you'd like to set for the city, this will be open for discussion, but if you have things like that, this is the time that we want to bring those up, hash them out for the 2023 goals. So we have intentionally not put that on the agenda for tonight, we'd like to address that in February after we've held our retreat and we have an idea with our budget updates. I'd also like to give you a report that we are having a presentation by our architect for the public works site plan tomorrow at 6:00 PM for our planning commission, and that will move forward to site plan, but feel free to review that and when the minutes come out for that. That's, there's nothing in the packet for that tomorrow, but you can review that after the workplace, or the, excuse me, the work session, is what I...
All right, thank you. All right, council, Grover, do you have anything?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, Steve?
The only thing I have is, I saw Grover had on his computer the, everything that was up here, our packet, I haven't been getting, I used to get it when I got this on my email, and I don't get the packet anymore, I don't know, what am I missing?
Hey, Maria, can you explain how to get it?
I, yes, I can. I'll just speak loud, it's fine. So I send out the, can you hear me? I send out the agenda, and I give you a link, where you can click on the link, and then you can find the packet and the agenda attached. I was trying to send the packet, and I actually changed it to like a Google Drive link, because sometimes the packet is so large, it, it's, makes it unable to email. So the link was my next best workaround. How do you feel about that?
So where do I find the link?
It's in the, it should be in the email, if, so the email...
I don't remember seeing the link, that's just, but you know, Jenny knows how computers sound.
It's okay.
I just went to the, yeah, to the agendas.
Agendas, it, mine.
I still have a hard time...
It's my intent to.
Oh, okay, I'll look at it when I get home.
Sorry, Ben.
Fortunately, our internet is not cooperating tonight, so I can't show you on the big screen, but it is on our website, and her email will take you right to that link.
You've got it before you...
What, the current agenda?
The agenda, and then the packet should be there.
Okay, I'll see what I can find when I get home. Good, all right, thank you, that's all I had.
All right, and that's, all right. I am, I think Jenny has said everything that we need. Tonight, though, we are having a closed executive session, so I am going to excuse those in the audience that we're not to be invited to stay, I'm just gonna be brief with intermission, and then we will return, but I need a motion to move into that.
I'll make a motion, we move into an executive session, closed executive session.
I'll say it. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christmas?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.